...this evening. It is with great pleasure and sadness that we are gonna sway in two new commissioners while we're letting two older commissioners go out and become citizens again. Uh, but at this time, we have our Honorable Tara Allen White to do the sermon for us. And I don't know if you want both of them to come at the same time, or you want separate?
All three.
All three?
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Jordan? Jordan? I'll go get out of your job. And I'll go get out of your job.
Each of you do solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Commissioner of Princeville, Ward Two, Ward Four, Ward One. You do? Yes. Thank you. As Honorable, all the copies are now getting all registered at the clerk of court's office.
Thank you.
The please bless the refreshments for us.
Let's pray. Most gracious, all wise and eternal gods, give him come boldly before your presence. As always, God, we thank you for the privilege of prayer, and God, we thank you for the power of prayer. Gods, we stand before your presence. God, we stand before you with grateful hearts. God, we thank you for this time which you've allowed us to assemble. God, I pray that you would give us a heart to serve your people. Serve your people in fairness, serve your people in justice, without malice, without, uh, uh, friendship, but oh, God, we want to just do your will. God, we pray right now that you will bless the refreshments that we're about to receive. God, I pray it be an nourishment for our bodies, and Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
For the commissioners, the meeting is now called to order on this Monday, December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, at seven o'clock P.M. As Commissioner Jones, please lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. May the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in your sight. May the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, God. We coming for you this evening to thank you for giving us another opportunity to transact the business of Princeville, and God, we ask that we do it the way that you would do it. We ask that anything that we say and anything that we do, however we act, however we handle the business of this town, God, would be the way that you would do it, that will be pleasing in your sight. We thank you, God, for each citizen that's represented here this evening, God, that's showing concern for our community. We thank you for every person that's represented here, God, we coming not as own lookers, but coming as being a part of the solution. We ask, God, that you will help us to be diligent in all that we do and all that we say, and we ask, God, that you will bind us together with a love that cannot be broken, because we can only transact your business if we do it in love, peace, and in harmony. For this, in Jesus' name we pray, and everybody says?
Amen.
Please have a seat. Uh, before we go into the pledge, we'd like to recognize our outgoing board members. We'll start with, um, Commissioner Sanders, if you come forward, please. This is a plaque from the town of Princeville for your dedicated service over the last, what, year? Okay? Presented to Commissioner Ken Sanders for dedication to the town of Princeville, December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much. A lot of times, people don't understand the sacrifices that elected officials have to make in order to make the town better. Uh, a lot of people come in complaining, mumbling, rumbling, and crying, as if we're not doing the very best that we can. We're not perfect. We don't claim to be perfect, but what we're doing is trying to do the very best that we can, first and foremost, to make sure that the town of Princeville is all that it can be. Make sure that our citizens get everything that they deserve. At this point, we're not there, but we're on the way. A lot of good things are happening, and we thank this man for his dedication and his pushing in order to move the town of Princeville forward. He's very busy. He goes up to Maryland just about every week. Goes down to Florida, but he's got Princeville on his mind. And that's the dedication that we need. Uh, we need good people running for these offices. Don't sit back and complain if you're not gonna try to be a part of the solution. And we thank you again for everything that you do. Thank you.
Well, to the Board of Commissioners, Dr. Knight, Town Manager, and also to wonderful attorney, and also to the citizen, I want to say thank you so much. Uh, this is very important to me. I've kind of reached a milestone in my life, and, um, can't believe I just turned sixty.
Couple days ago.
Yeah. I turned sixty because, you know, my parents never made it. I just got out of surgery on Thursday, so, you know, my chest and everything is still hurting. I can't hardly eat, but, but more importantly, I, I want to commend Commissioner Jones for a couple of reasons, because we worked very hard, and we remain friends, and we're gonna be friends, but more importantly, we brought out a lot of people to vote, get a lot of people voting, and we should take this momentum for many reasons. For number one, when you vote, you have a say in your government, and you dictate the terms of that contract. And what's also so important, too, is to remember that we have this census coming up in two thousand and twenty, which is the most important piece before we have to go to the elections in November. Because when you think about the census, you're thinking about power, and you're thinking about resources, and until we get to that point, and we have to answer that census, and everyone in that home and your residents must answer that census, not just one person, because that's so important, because what affects Princeville is public policy. And on my Board of Commissioners team, we say it all the time, public policy is key, and we see the effects of it. We see it at the county level, level, state level, and we see it on the federal level. So I ask all of us, and I will be driving force behind it, because I'm gonna open up my office down on Main Street, and you can come in there, and you can use all my computers. If you don't have computers at home, you can come in and you can answer the census there, starting in Jan-, I think, was it January? So, to all of you, it was a ride, and this was just a part of the journey for me, but it ain't over, because I will be back, I promise you. So thank all of you, okay?
Whether that's a shade, say Commissioner or Golden Platter. I guess for this evening, we'll say Commissioner. Please come forward. Dedication, hard work, service to the people, but everywhere we go, Commissioner Bullock is known as the Golden Platter. He even sings for the people, make them happy, hoping, hoping they'll open their pocketbooks and send some more money down to town of Princeville. But he's, he's been struggling for the last year or so, beating cancers, beating cancer, never gave up, never missed a meeting that I can recall, maybe one or two over the last three years, because of his love for the town of Princeville. Uh, we need people who love the town of Princeville to make sure that we stay on track. Even though he's not on the board now, I know he knows, still knows my telephone number, and he's gonna wear it out as usual, and I appreciate everything that you do. Continue to do a good job.
First of all, I'd like to say this has been an honor and a pleasure, almost like a roller coaster, but echoing what Commissioner Sanders have said, and what this board is challenged and charged with, I only got one thing briefly to say. We need to remember who we are. And if we can remember that and know that that's power, and members, and unity, it ain't got nothing to do with the black power or the white power, we need to realize we can get anything we want to get and deserve justly if we can unite and be one voice. The saying of being the oldest settlement in North America is about blacks. You have no idea the significance of what that says and what it means, and until you know that and act accordingly, you won't experience too many changes. Once you get it in your craw, and you know there's power in that saying, ain't nothing can stop you. I've experienced it, not only as a member of the platters, but I'm new, and I know my place. I know from whence I come, and I talk proudly about Princeville. I just want you, the new members that's coming on board, if you can, do not dwell in the politics. Dwell in the service, the stewardship that you owe to these people that have put you in this position. Don't let anybody mess with your, your intent. That's what Princeville has been like for the last thirty, forty, maybe decades, they've been politics. You've got to come together and make them, they serve for your pleasure. Hold them to it, and you'll be surprised where you're going. Never before in my life have I seen Princeville so close to accomplishing some of the things that our forefathers had dreamt of. Dr. Knight, her staff, the leadership, our competent lawyer here. We don't know how close we are to getting what we deserve. There's a hundred and sixty state, maybe in Florida, or somewhere, another sixty somewhere, but if you ain't getting it fast enough, come together, unite, sign the petition, give a hand, and God, you'll be surprised how fast you will get that. You've got to be one voice down here. I can't do it by myself, but you can best believe, I will be talking and singing. Everybody know. Only you can make this dream come true. Only you can get this message through. Can Barbie, you know, read your poems? All together? You're my dream come true, my one and only you.
You please stand with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Next, we'll move to public comments. Please state your name, address, and remember you have two minutes. Well, Dr. Nelson, you have about fifteen?
No, I won't need that.
Okay. Dr. Nelson, you on?
I'm on that one.
Come on up, boy, we can see.
I'm coming, I'm coming. Uh, hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me talk to you guys. Um, just to echo what this gentleman said, you all would not believe how hyped people are about this festival that we're putting together because of the history of Princeville. We've been on social media since August twenty-third, and the biggest post that blew up was the history of Princeville. It got, um, thirteen thousand hits. Um, we've reached forty-five thousand pages since August promoting the festival and the Black Farm Tour, and if anybody doesn't know about it, can you pass these around? Take one and, um, pass the, 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 pass it back. On the front, it just says Run, Walk, Jog, Ride, but it's a festival after a five K Run, a ten K Run, a thirty mile bike ride, and a sixty-six mile bike ride that's hitting four farms in Edgecombe Town County, four black-owned farms. Um, and I don't know if you can, I'm sorry, y'all, I'm messing up here. I don't know if you can see, but this is Heritage Park, or as Google calls it, Riverfront Park, but y'all got it right, it's Heritage Park. I've already spoken with the sheriff, and we're gonna have a partial road closure for the five K and ten K Run that would start at nine-thirty. Um, by eleven, vendors can come in and set up. At the back of the park, here's where the levee and the river would be. We'll have vendors all around. The stage will be where the baseball field is, the playground, the beautiful new playground that you put up. We've got a couple people donating big inflatables, so the kids will have a Kids' Own, a Bounty House. There is, uh, a space for the mobile museum, and I'm requesting if the mobile museum will be on site, that would be awesome. It would be amazing, and there's gonna be some paperwork up here about vending, because this is the economic, this is an economic, this is an economic opportunity. This is why we're doing this, two reasons. Economic opportunity for the people here, well, there's more than two reasons. Exposure of Princeville and its history, and politics follows the money. Rocky Mountain is on the cusp of being gentrified. You all are next, and if you don't direct how it goes, they will snatch this riverfront property, turn it into lakefront property after they told you it's worthless, and turn it into the gold mine that we know it is. So my thing is, we already know what the playbook is, ever since they gave the, the, the trinkets to the Indians and stole the whole country. So we're gonna tell them, you can't come here with trinkets. We know what this is, and guess what? Just based on the history, we're gonna bring five thousand people here just to hang out in the park. The, the Friday night will be staged out of, out of Rocky Mountain. There's gonna be a meet and greet, a barn crawl, and a block party. Um, and then Saturday morning, things come to Princeville. Sunday, back to Rocky, Rocky Mountain for brunch. Already, I've got a national organization called ThePeople'sFoundation.org. It's a national form, organization that connects farmers and veterans with funding from USDA. This team has, there's thirteen members on our last conference call, stretching from Mexico, Zimbabwe, California, Philly, Detroit, Boston, uh, Maryland, Virginia Beach. They have a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to connect farmers and, and veterans with USDA funds. One of their mandates is to have a yearly farm conference. They picked Princeville Homecoming to have their yearly farm conference. That's how this has already gotten out. So they're gonna have their farm conference on Friday during the day at the Rocky Mountain, either the Event Center or Imperial Center, depending on how many people sign up. Then they're gonna take a charter bus Saturday morning, and the four farms that our bikers are gonna hit, they're gonna hit. They're gonna bring the resources from the USDA to those farmers, so that they have, and their, 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 um, their, uh, four areas that they want to focus on, God in the universe works amazingly, fit exactly with what our farmers. Felton Wooten, your very own son, Felton Wooten, Abraham Wooten's great, great nephew? He's aquaponics. That's their first area that they're bringing of expertise. They didn't know this, okay? And I didn't know them. High Tunnel, one of our farmers has just put up a high tunnel. Twenty-first century farmers, that's our very own Kendrick ransom, okay? Air Legacy Farming, that is Mr. Wooten, and our first farm shop, which is, uh, Willis Tillery's Farm on, um, Legged Road. So that's the first connect that we've made. The second connect is a gentleman out of Raleigh that got a grant to do entrepreneurial seminars, twelve-week entrepreneurial boot camp, and he wants to bring them to Edgecombe County. They're free, it's one day a week, they feed you, unlimited number of people can come, and we're gonna do three levels of entrepreneurial boot camp. A youth boot camp at the North Edgecombe High, and I'm talking with Donnell Cannon tomorrow, a new business owners boot camp, and I would request that we use your space here in Princeville, if that's okay? I don't know who I asked about that. The senior, I guess the senior center, Ms. Worst, can I use your space? I don't know, but we'll talk. Okay. And then, um, and then, uh, established business owners boot camp, and we would do that at a Rocky Mountain. But that's available to anybody, and if you look on the back of that pamphlet, vending for Princeville, uh, citizens is free. Usually a vendor fee is anywhere from fifty to, it could be as high as five hundred dollars. They just had the Black Business Expo at the Marriott in Durham, and the vendor fee was six hundred dollars just to walk in there. Of course, we would never do that, but for Princeville, it's free. Um, and then I have up here, and I guess I'll leave it on the table where the cookies were, a little, uh, email that I sent around with information. If you want to vend food, all it is, is a seventy-five-dollar fee to the county, not to us, and then they give you a checklist, you set up your tent, the fire marshal comes out and inspects your tent, and they make sure you fit the checklist. You don't have to do the safe server, and if you know how to bake, barbecue, make lemonade, and you wanna make some money, you're gonna have hopefully five hundred starving riders and a few hundred runners, and everybody else coming out there that wanna eat. So we want you guys to make the money. I have invited other vendors, but I want Princeville, and it would be wonderful to me if there was actually a tent. I did this little mock-up. When you come in, if the mobile museum is there, right where the concession stand is on the other side, if there was a big Princeville tent for all the Princeville vendors, because as soon as you walk in, bam, that's the first thing you see, and you, I asked Eric Evans, how many people a, a license could, you know, one license for how many people? He said, a thousand people. One person has to get the license, it could be a team, and then you could have as many people under that food license, so if you wanna have a Princeville food vending tent, nobody even has to come out of their pocket but a dollar, okay? And so that's what's happening. We've got, uh, we've communicated with the sheriff about road closures, sheriffs for, for security, and everything is on schedule, so I just want everybody to know what was happening. There's a lot of excitement, and it's all around the fact of Princeville's history, exactly what you said, is exactly what you said. People are hungry for that, particularly in this day and age when you got this craziness in the White House. So, um, if there's any questions, I, I'm gonna leave this, like I said, this is the letter about the vending, and this is for the council, so you can look and see what our tentative schedule will be, so you know what's going on, if you want to pass it around.
Questions from the board. Questions of the audience.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridges?
Well, I've been asking a lot of questions coming here and suggesting everything, and recommend to this new board, uh, yep, sure happened, get a police department stationed in Princeville. Look at the water system. Water system in Princeville, the minimum is ninety dollars. Over here in Tampa, thirty-five, no more than forty. Now, get the museum, uh, they're going. You got a building set up there in eighteen eighty-five, bunch of junk, don't worry about it. Nobody there, you walk in, anyone don't come out the other. Move that junk out the way, eighteen eighty-five, more. Put, put a building up there if you want to see it there, and free them here, where the, where the town was founded. You got to sit down there to where the museum, put the museum to work, don't be, and go in one, nobody there to tell you anything. So now, the Alamo have invited me. I'm not going there. Alamo is the bridge there. They, they, they have invited me to Christmas dinner, sent the menu, and all of that. I'm not going there. And, 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 that's, I believe so. Money's going away for nothing. And, uh, um, get the museum ready. Get it, get it, get it ready. You got money enough. I understand that twenty, uh, twenty-eight billion dollars now, the governor had, the governor's sitting on. Get the committee to go see the governor. Get Toby Fitz, he's up there in the Senate. Go, go up to the legislature to talk with him. I'm in up there, come back with five million dollars to Princeville and put in a running water, sun, paved street, curry and gum. You can do it. Get up or don't run for nothing. Get up or run for nothing. Okay, so, and now, uh, I'm glad to see Sheriff's Department is here. Yep, he didn't push the light, telling, because you got thirty-five miles down on Main Street, thirty-five miles down on Greenwood, two fifty-eights, you just update. You get out there, they'll run over in two yellow line. The state, the state, the state take care of that. There's a deer they kill right on Greenwood Boulevard. And Mr. Porter here, tell him to pull the deer off the highway. You don't have to bury it, the state will do that. The state come along there, they take care of the highway clean every day. And the deer killer on the highway car turning out, they gonna meet somebody head on. Pull them off the road, don't bury them, you don't have to bury them. The state will bury them. They coming over there every day, grow down that highway and clean them. They, they glad, they glad to do that. Don't, I might be voting against it, they kick you out, and I hope I be able to do that. I'm a hundred and two months old, but my brain is still twenty-one. And I'll be, I'll be, I'll be right after you, right? You got money enough to spend the hip, kick your mouth. I use it. I use it. Thank you, I want you to know it. And I got some friends, that right, Dr. Dale? She looking around, that's her nephew there. She looking around, she am. I go up there and see how bad, to get my hair done. I bet she sitting there, but she'll get you, if you don't do right, she'll get you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Have three words, yeah.
Yes, sir. Y'all remember what I just said? Uh, people gonna complain, right? Okay, Mr. Kavishirah?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm coming to the board and saying how good, uh, the men got Public Work working, cleaning up town in Princeville, they doing well. And, uh, they picking up bushes, truck going comeback load. And I think they got a good relationship, Public Work and the men. And, uh, and W has, uh, I'm speaking big word, uh, being the net, uh, county commissioner in District Two, trying to get the water bill down. Anybody wanna up? Vote for Violet Hur. Anybody wanna down, vote for Kavishirah. It don't matter. But we need to get the water bill down. And, uh, people back in seven, they paying one hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred dollars a month for water deal. And, and that's ridiculous. And that must raise that town in Tarver, people paying forty, thirty-five dollars a month. But we need to get our water bill back down. We need somebody to go to the county and let they know we ain't certified with it. I'm telling the people, where you about war, all around, come out and vote. Up or down, we need to let the chain. And, uh, uh, Mayor, I would like to have your vote. You know, you've been working on, I don't know if you've been working on trying to get the water down, but need to get somebody gonna be on the board and throw out this, the wa, uh, the water bill too high. I hope, uh, Mr. Jones, uh, uh, Ellis Swanon, go to the, uh, county board meeting. None of know we concerned about getting the water bill down. And I'll be right there with you if you really wants the help. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have announcements. Uh, in your package you have the Edgecombe County Entrepreneur Organization. Of course, the Martin Luther King celebration is coming up. Uh, they are asking for a recommendation for the Citizen of the Year Award. And also, they got the schedule of events in addition to sponsors to your levels. Dr. Knight, any idea how many staff would like to attend?
Um, no, not at this time, Mayor. I will get back to you ASAP.
All board members, are y'all gonna participate in the banquet, in our take banquet?
Yes.
So we have at least five there, and I know we have, how many staff do you have?
Um, seven.
Seven. So we may wanna look at, if possible, the thousand-dollar gold with table of sixteen. What's the pleasure of the board, what y'all think?
I think that if many, uh, board members and the, um, staff that would like to go, the possibility may be favorable to them, so I'll do it there.
Anyone else? No, we don't need to go. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a thank you card from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the Tarver, Edgecombe Chamber of Commerce sends you a great, big thank you. With members like you, we represent a significant voice, and as a group, we continue to make a positive difference providing a substantial business community in Edgecombe County. Through your support, we make a way for businesses, institutions, and individuals to be known and promoted. As years progress, we hope to continue earning your trust and your loyalty from the Tarver, Edgecombe Chamber of Commerce, board and staff. Monthly meeting date change, if you look at your calendars for January, of course, the third, uh, Monday is Martin Luther King Celebration. So we could meet on the thirteenth, which is the second Monday. Is that okay with everyone, thirteenth? January thirteenth, second Monday, same time? Good? You good? Okay, same time. The thirteenth is our next board meeting, January thirteenth, at seven o'clock. I'd like to say happy birthday to our newly-elected Commissioner, Mr. Allen Jones, December the sixth. Our outgoing Commissioner, Mr. Kenneth Saunders, December ninth. And our Town Clerk, Natasha Barrett, which is tomorrow. She'll be twen- twenty-two tomorrow. Okay, we have next, the call-in post sign up. Dr. Knight, you wanna tell on that?
Um, I'll speak on that. The call-in post sign up is for, um, anyone that wishes to be notified, um, in case there's any type of, um, anything going on in the community in town Princeville, whether it's, um, you know, having to do with water, any announcement as far as, um, activities that's going on in the community, they can sign up. We have a sign up sheet outside, um, right outside, um, where you sign up with citizens, sign up is. You can sign up there, leave your information, your telephone number, and we'll make sure that if there's anything that we need to contact you on, you will receive a call from us.
Okay, make sure you sign up, there's a lot of information that's going out. You don't wanna be left out. Next, we have the African-American Cultural Celebration. We have been invited to present in Raleigh on January?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, at eleven forty-five. Also, if you're not busy on that day, please come up and support. And now, the winners of the yard decorating competition. Commissioner Jones?
Let me first of all thank all of the citizens that signed up to be a part of the yard decorating contest. And this was just a friendly and a happy, uh, season of a time that we wanted to do something just to lighten the load, just to, to build camaraderie, just to say, hey, we, we're happy about something. So we had several citizens who signed up to, uh, be a part of the yard decorating contest. And, um, I would like to first of all, um, thank those of you who have won. And the first winner is in Ward One, and that person is Ms. Regina Cobb. Oh, I think she said she wouldn't be able to be here because her daughter had a cheer, uh, had to cheer tonight. But I'll take, I'll be taking the hundred-dollar gift card to her on tomorrow.
Anybody know her? Check with her to make sure she get it.
Ward Two, Ms. Deana Robertson. Yeah, come on, let's give her a hand and a dance. Thank you so much, Deana, your beautiful yard and your sportsmanship. Congratulations.
Thank you much.
All right. All right.
Deana, you're one of our church members, expect ten percent.
Uh, Ward Three, uh, Mr. Ernest Harold, and he's not gonna be here this evening because his, uh, son-in-law is in the hospital and he went to visit him. But he had, all the yards were beautiful. And then Ward Four, Dorita Shaw. Ward, I'm sorry, Dothia Shaw, look right at it. Ward Four. Congratulations. She's just out the hospital and she was able to decorate her yard. Congratulations.
I had a lot of help.
Yeah, good deal, that's what it's all about.
That's another one of my church members.
He wasn't a judge, though, let me make that clear. But another thing I do wanna say. You're welcome. When we were, when the judges and I, the judges were, uh, Ms. Tina Parker and, um, County Commissioner, um, Val Harris. And we were going around looking for the addresses to do the judging. And we noticed that there were a lot of citizens who don't have your address posted so that it could be visibly seen. And I'm sure you would like to say something in regards to that because it is very important that your addresses are visible, uh, especially at night, during the day too, uh, but especially at night. There were so many of them, we had to really search for them because I didn't know exactly where the houses were, using my GPS, but a lot of the addresses were just not visible. Let's make sure that we do, looking at our addresses so that it can be seen in case of emergencies or anything. Thank you guys so much. Next year, we want everybody to decorate those yards so that we can have a really, really big contest. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, we have, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move to presentations, we already did that. Thank you so much, Dr. Robertson. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Certainly.
They promptly moved in second that we approved the agenda, are there questions? All in favor, you just voting sign aye. Opposed nay, ayes have it. Next, we'll move to department reports, senior citizens.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And to all, do I have any, I think you have my report in front of you. If you have any requests or any questions?
Questions for Ms. Worstley? We certainly wanna thank you for what you're doing, and we understand that your parents are illing, and you continue to move forward with the senior citizens, so we certainly appreciate it. Our prayers.
And I would like to ask for your prayers, my dad would put in hospice on Friday.
Next item on the agenda, we have the Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Martin Tagness, I'm the Communications Director for Sheriff Cleatkins. Um, I did email out the report like I normally do every month. Um, if you guys have any questions, if now, time to ask about it. I know there was some insight everybody was wondering about, um, how we do the reports. Um, Princeville, I actually have set up our CAD system, so everything that I pull and you guys receive is strictly Princeville only. So we have everything set up, so that way when the dispatchers place it in there, there's a code that it goes to. So when I do a report, it only pulls calls from Princeville, doesn't pull anything from around Princeville, doesn't pull anything from the county, I'm able to separate it too. Um, just to give you a quick insight, um, last month, you guys had two-hundred-and-fifteen calls for the town of Princeville, and then total calls for the Sheriff's Office, so the county minus Princeville was three-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-three. So I'm able to pull those stats separately.
Question from the board. So we wanna appreciate, thank you all for the increase in the housing and school checks, went up to a hundred and eight, that's outstanding. Uh, traffic stops, uh, if we could get that up a little bit, we have eighteen. But I'd like to, Mr. Bridges, say there's a race track. And I know it's everywhere you go, but yes, you can do it very much, appreciate it. Anything else for the Sheriff's Department? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
I'd like to also thank all the citizens and the friends and relatives who came over to the Princeville Christmas parade. Uh, I hope you all enjoyed it, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year.
Thank you so much. Next, we have the Princeville Vol. Fire Department.
Um, I don't have anything other than, um, but I did feel to, um, add to my report. Uh, we will be getting the sirens back working, uh, within the next week. So if you hear the siren go off, um, we used to have, we'll up for ratings inspection, which in turn affects, um, your homeowners insurance, and so the siren, uh, is an alarm device, so, uh, that's coming up. So if you hear it blow, it's not like a, everybody get out, it's just a notification for the firm that we do have, uh, a fire-related call. Some medical calls that will not blow, but fire, accident, stuff like that.
So y'all ready for the inspection?
Okay.
Okay, it's in January?
It is January eighth.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
There are times that, that we may hear gunshots fired. Uh, what procedure would you guys like for us to do in regard to that? Is it okay that we call you guys?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and sometimes I may not even know where they're coming from. I can only tell you where, where I think.
Yes, ma'am.
So can you speak to that a little bit?
The best thing for you citizens is to call. Call, that's, that's what we're there for, not one there, we'll get, um, officers there as quick as we can, um, if you know the direction, how many shots. A lot of times, how many shots is, is good also. And if you can tell what type of sound it is, sometimes that's helpful too, 'cause it'd be a high-power rifle, or maybe it's just, you know, some type of handgun. And if it sounds like it's going away or coming, coming towards you. Um, one of the things that the sheriff didn't want me to, since you asked that question, didn't want me to let you know that, you know, when we have a situation like that, in our CAD system, we have a new, uh, new text messaging that we do, what we use for the Fire Department, where we've added this for shots fired like that in Princeville. So when a shot's fired goes out, we actually have command staff logo that we add to the CAD system, where it does a sense of text message to the sheriff and all of his command staff, so we know something's going on in Princeville. So if we have a shooting in the county, Princeville, Rocky Mount, anywhere it is, they're being notified right away that something major's going on. So most of the time, they're already responding, so.
Another question. Now, if someone said something about there's a training, a, a place where, where sheriffs or police, or someone does training, and sometimes shots, those shots were from training, is that true, was that?
No, ma'am.
From the.
Right, right, and Tarver has, right, they have a firing range that they're behind the Walmart.
Behind the Walmart.
Yes, ma'am. And if they're doing nighttime shooting, yes, you're probably gonna hear those, 'cause remember, night, right, your sound's gonna travel. So a lot of time, and that's, that's another reason why it's nice to know where it's coming from, 'cause we'll be able to investigate.
What about like maybe six, five or six in the morning, would that be?
No, that would not be training. Yeah, that's not gonna be training right there.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to the Fire Department, any questions? Uh, any updates on the sewage issue? Chief?
None of this.
None of this?
No, the toilets are working, so when they're working, we just, we just go with it, so.
Okay. Public Works? Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
This is just a point for the season, um, fire inspection up in, in the town hall, town hall for the administration, I think it's third floor, for fire alarms. Everybody's trading the heat zone there and burning stuff, so you can get free fire alarms, um, raise it up.
You can get it from the Fire Department.
Tarver got it too.
Yeah, if you need fire alarms, just reach out to the Fire Department, we can go over to second floor emergency management office, that's what we're talking about.
They include all common monopaz detectors?
It does not, it does not. But those are fairly reasonable loads.
Sir?
There's a pool of deer off the highway.
Okay.
Town manager regarding public work, yes, I had a talk with, uh, um, Principal Walker, and we know that Princeville School's supposed to be opening back in January, and, and they are asking, they're expecting a lot of, a lot of people to be, uh, I'm not sure if they're the grand opening or whatnot, but they've asked that we try to make sure that Walton Street is clean, and you know, some of that debris is cut down, and just make it very, very nice and very polished looking, because we want it to, we want it to be attractive anyway, but especially if it was something like this with the school coming back and we have so many different people coming in, and so we can make sure Public Work really cut back a lot of that, that growth. And I think it's right, especially right at the corner, there may be an empty house there, I don't know if the code has been, uh...
So, um, thank you so much for that, Commissioner Jones. Um, I've been in communication with Principal Walker, and we have been collaborating in preparation for their return, and so Public Works will be ensuring that the area is clean. We've also talked about the lighting, Sheriff Atkinson and I were talking earlier, and he's been in communication with her, talking about the camera system that they have internally to see if they can let some of that be external. So there's, um, multiple conversations that are transpiring in preparation for their return.
Other questions on Public Works? Next item, Edgecombe County Disaster Recovery. Questions? Not much changed from the last time. Next item, finance reports? Questions?
Very good report, thank you.
Thank you, she's doing an excellent job.
She is.
Next, we'll move to the Town Manager Report, feasibility.
So, uh, Mayor and Board of Commissioners, you have before you the feasibility study. Um, since the last time that the board met, um... Since the last time that the board met, four firms have submitted their qualification packets for consideration for the feasibility study. What that will look like is them going in to assess the seventy-five homes to see whether or not they're structurally sound for elevation. So tomorrow morning, we will reconvene to interview two out of the four firms, Edgecombe County and the town of Princeville.
Okay, so now, if they are not structurally sound, there is funding available for elevation outside of the new fund.
So that's what Incor is here for this evening, that we will have further discussions about the availability of additional funds and options for those citizens who structures are not sound enough for elevation.
Next item?
So, just an update on the last time that the board met last month with the sheriff agreement, Sheriff Atkins is in agreement with the contract, and so we're ready to move forward with those hours and days discussed and approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Any questions? Okay, next item, we have no old business, new business. Is there a nomination for Mayor Pro Tem?
I would like to make a motion to nominate myself as Mayor Pro Tem.
Is there a second? There's probably a motion and move in second that Commissioner Mark be the Mayor Pro Tem, are there questions? Let me back up, any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate myself.
Okay. Is there a second?
I said.
Okay. So, we have two nominations on the floor. All in favor of Commissioner Mark, raise your hand. Raise your hand high. Yes, you have to raise your hand. There's two, all in favor of Commissioner Joyner, raise your hand. There's two, and I'm gonna vote for Commissioner Joyner. Commissioner Joyner is the new Mayor Pro Tem. The next item is adding an additional bank signer.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, I will humbly ask the board to approve on this evening an additional bank signer. It will allow the finance department and the administration the flexibility of ensuring that checks get signed in a timely manner, and that if you're not available, at least we'll have increased options to meet the timelines that some checks require.
Questions from the board?
Do you have any incidents where, where you cite any instances when, that will challenge with getting checks signed on a timely manner?
Yeah, there's been several instances where Ms. Gina has had difficulty getting checks signed in a timely manner. Most recently, the Sheriff Department, those deputies didn't get paid in a timely manner because we couldn't get anyone here in a timely manner to sign the checks. So I would just humbly ask if you could add the Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Linda Joyner, to be the additional check signer, and it would give us the flexibility, you know, to have someone to get here in a timely manner, and it wouldn't put any pressure on two commissioners.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Move that we add an additional check.
Is there a second? Okay, then probably move in second that we add an additional check signer, and who would that be?
I ask that the Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Linda Joyner.
All in favor of a new check signer, let's do that first, a new check signer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Ayes have it. All in favor of Commissioner Linda, Mayor Pro Tem, Linda Joyner, being the next additional check signer, say aye. Opposed nay? Ayes have it, thank you so much. Next, we have the citizenship award.
So, Mayor and Board of Commissioners, as I bring to your recall that last February, during our one hundred and thirty-fourth Founder's Day celebration, we bestowed a 2019 Citizenship Award to Deacon Mr. Roger Sutherland, under the recommendations of Commissioner Jerome Mark, and he was elated, and we still have the memories of his acceptance on that evening, and so we wanna keep that momentum moving in our community, and so we now are preparing for the 2020 Citizenship Award, and we have the nomination form readily available for anyone who wants to nominate someone from the citizens. There is a criteria and rules that must be adhered to, and so all of that is captured on the form. So we're excited, and we wanna keep this momentum going, and so when we transition to the new town hall, there will be a plaque that says Citizenship Award for the town of Princeville. And so we're asking Mayor, you and the board to support this wonderful venture for the town of Princeville.
Questions from the board? So the citizens get the, make the nomination?
The citizens or the board?
Okay.
The citizens get to make the nomination, the board finalizes the decision.
And we present this in February?
At our February meeting, or if there is a community event in February, it can be either or.
So we have the Edgecombe County Citizen of the Year and the Princeville Citizen of the Year. Okay, questions, other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the executive session, we'll let our attorney speak on the executive session.
With regard to executive session, we just wanna make sure that we are cognizant that this is governed by NCGS one four three three one eight dot eleven A one five and six. Mayor, I will allow you to read the rest of the statute, but that is applicable to A, properties that we will review, and the eligibility for services under any new program, the CBBG mitigation program, that is going to be governed under confidential information that we will be talking about private citizens and private property. As to B, community parcels, we will be talking about the contractual nature of the board entering into any contracts with regard to parcels. And C, personnel matters, as governed by that subsection six, we'll be talking about those issues as well. And Mayor, I will allow you to state, you know, state the proper statute for the record, please.
And that is to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of the State of the four of the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of chapter one thirty-two of the general statute. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Still moved.
Then probably move in second that we go into executive session, are there questions? All in favor, use the voting sign aye. Opposed nay? Ayes have it, thank you so much.